Everybody, go ahead and get started here. I'm going to welcome everybody tonight. The meeting tonight, so let's go ahead and get started. If everybody could stand, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag and have Mr. Stepp say the prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this time together. We thank you for those who have joined us here today. Please bless us all. Please bless our county employees. Just, we thank you for just all of your blessings that you bestow upon us every single day. May we be constantly reminded of just your grace, your kindness, your love. In Jesus' most precious and holy name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, universal, eternal, eternal.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Stepp. You did a good job. All right, um, okay, let's get started on the agenda. The council has had the agenda before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Council President, could I make a motion that we add a proclamation for National Emergency Services Week as well as a motion to remove public hearing for Talbot Interface Shelter under Item 7, as well as administrative resolution for Talbot Interface Shelter under Item 8?
Okay, that sounds great. Um, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Okay, is there a second?
Okay, there's a motion and second to go ahead and adjust the agenda to a proclamation for the emergency services and the Talbot Face Shelter to take that out and put the proclamation in. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, okay. And before I forget, we have two councils absent tonight. Mr. Lusher, I believe, is on vacation and Mrs. Hayes, she is on vacation, so we're hoping they're having fun tonight. So, they're probably watching us anyway, you know, that's for sure. So, but they're taking a little break and we, it's just us three tonight. So, okay, next on the agenda is the minutes of May 2nd. We've had a chance to take a look at it. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
No.
Okay, hearing none. The chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next on the agenda is the dispersments of May 16th and May 23rd. The council has had a chance to review those dates. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Did I say anything? Everything okay? All right, hearing none, the dispersments are accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so first up tonight was one of the proclamations is National Boating Safety Week. Madam Secretary, could you please read that proclamation into the record, please?
National Safe Boating Week, May 20th through 26th, 2023, whereas many residents of and visitors to Talbot County enjoy recreational boating, including fishing, hunting, sailing, canoeing, and kayaking; and whereas each year, an average of 650 people die in boating-related accidents in the United States, and 75% of these deaths are caused by drowning; and whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors; and whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today if they had worn their life jackets; and whereas, most boating fatalities involve boats whose operators did not have proper boating safety education; and whereas, Talbot County recognizes the year-round efforts of the United States Coast Guard and the Maryland Department of Natural Resources in saving lives and protecting us on the water; and whereas, Talbot County recognizes the volunteer efforts of Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla 2103 in Easton and Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotillas throughout Maryland in promoting safe boating education and practices through classroom instruction, vessel examinations, and on-the-water patrols; and whereas, in June 1958, President Dwight D. Eisenhower established National Safe Boating Week; and in 1995, the date for National Safe Boating Week was changed to the full week before Memorial Day weekend each year. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through 26th, 2023, as Safe Boating Week in Talbot County, and urge all those who boat to practice safe boating habits, avoid using alcohol or drugs when operating a boat, and always wear a life jacket while boating, given under our hands and this great seal of Talbot County this 23rd day of May in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Appreciate that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, is there a motion second to present the proclamation? Madam Secretary, call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, so you guys want to come on up? I think it's Petty Officer First Class, is it Brian Gooch? And the guest, yep? Come on up, guys.
Hi, guys. Good evening. Thanks very much for having me.
Absolutely, yeah.
My name's Reed Carey. I'm the Vice Flotilla Commander of Auxiliary Flotilla 2103, based here in Easton.
Okay.
I'm very honored to be joined tonight by Bosom's Mate First Class, Brian Gooch, active duty United States Coast Guard, as well as by Mr. Ed Burke, who's the flotilla commander, the flotilla here in Easton, and Tom Stokes, who's the Division Commander of Division 21, which covers the eastern shore.
Right, great, great pleasure. You guys being here and we're honored that you're serving us and we really appreciate your service, that's for sure.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, recreational boating is a very popular activity here in Talbot County around the country, enjoyed by over 100 million Americans, and it's generally a very safe activity. And while boating safety has improved over the past year, there's still a significant number of accidents and fatalities from boating. There were over 4,400 boating accidents in 2021, the most recent year for which we have numbers, and 658 fatalities. Here in Maryland, there were 138 boating accidents and six deaths. So, we want to remind everyone this Safe Boating Week, there's some basic steps that you can take to ensure that you're safe on the water. Stay sober while boating. Don't drink and vote. Wear a life jacket. 81% of victims of fatal boat accidents drowned and around 83% of those were not wearing life jackets. Could have been saved had they been wearing life jackets. And attending a Safe Boating Course. It's mandatory for people born after 1972, but it's a great idea for everyone. 75% of boating fatalities occurred on boats where the operator had not taken a Safe Boating Course. So, Safe Boating Week has been around since 1958, and it's been the week before Memorial Day since 1995. So, as you all get ready to go back on the water this summer, put our boats in the water, it's a great time to think about that. The United States Coast Guard and Coast Guard Auxiliary will do what we can to keep people safe on the water this summer, and we're thrilled that Talbot County is joining us and proclaiming this to be Safe Boating Week. Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Ms. Buckey, you want to go ahead and present proclamation? You guys want to come on up? That'd be great.
Counsel, just kind of line up here for a picture.
I just wanted to say that I've heard from constituents that you've been out and about on the waters, and I want to thank you and praise you on your diligence and your devotion to duty.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your support.
Okay, definitely make the Chesapeake Bay Safe Force, that's for sure. Okay, next, Madam Secretary, next proclamation is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Proclamation, National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 2nd, 2023, whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded; and whereas, Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than individuals in other high-income countries, with an average of nearly 17,000 homicides occurring in the United States each year; and whereas, public safety is local government's highest responsibility, and jurisdictions across the nation, including Talbot County, are working to end the senseless gun violence with evidence-based solutions; and whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from children and individuals with dangerous histories; and whereas, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15; and on June 2nd, 2023, in recognition of what would have been her 26th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and to the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, the idea of recognizing this day was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, the color which symbolizes the value of human life and is worn by hunters to announce themselves to other hunters; and whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd, the first Friday in June, 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence and to honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now therefore, be it resolved that in keeping with our efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives, we, the County Council of Talbot County, declare the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Talbot County, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we, as a county, must do more to reduce gun violence, given in under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 23rd day of May in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion second to approve the proclamation as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, then. Okay, is Ms. Hunt here? Yep, you guys want to come on up? You can sit right there. Yep, yep. There you go.
Hi, oh, thank you. Yes, I wrote the council in hopes that...
You want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Oh, my name is Sarah Sayre, and I am the co-lead of the Upper Shore Group of Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America.
Okay.
One of our priorities over the course of a year is to recognize and become aware of victims and survivors of gun violence. And toward that end, we always set the first weekend in June as Wear Orange Weekend in honor of National Gun Violence... It's a National Gun Violence Awareness Weekend. We will be having an event, in fact, on June 4th out in the courtyard here. Thank you. Where we will have information about safe storage of guns, keeping guns out of the hands of those who should not have them, et cetera. And we will have activities for children that are unrelated, but thoughtful. And we are delighted that the County Council of Talbot County has joined us in signing off on this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else for you?
No, nothing more for me, but just that we are growing as an organization, and Be Smart is the name of the program that is teaching parents about how to safely store their guns and their ammunition locked up away from kids. So, that's our main goal. Thanks.
Well, I really appreciate that, and I will comment on that because I'm an avid hunter myself, and I have guns and I've got kids and I've brought them up the right way and really taught them what the responsibilities of guns are, okay? Because it's not the gun, so to speak, it's the person that has it. So, we have to be very careful in the whole orange and the hunting and everything. That's something that I've grown up with, and I really appreciate that whole sort of aspect of the orange because I know what that's all about, and that does save lives. And I really appreciate what you guys are doing for us.
I think I forgot to introduce myself, though, so I'm...
That's okay. That's okay.
I'm Mary Hunt Miller, and I am Sarah's co-lead for this group.
That's great. That's great. Well, we appreciate it. You good?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just, I'll kind of echo off Chuck just about safety. I'm an avid Second Amendment supporter hunter, as well as Maryland Article 28, you know, firmly believing all of them. And gun safety is certainly, you know, as top priority as it should be. And just, you know, I mean, senseless gun violence, there's absolutely no reason for it.
Correct.
As long as we're taking, like, I believe in your note, we said, talking about, what was it? Evidence-based solutions. So, if we can stick with evidence-based solutions to going after, you know, senseless gun violence, I'm all for it.
Yep. So, I've got a proclamation. You guys come on up. Okay. All right, next on the list, we got EMS Week. That's what we have. It's a big deal. Okay? Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that proclamation, please?
Proclamation, National Emergency Medical Services Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2023, whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready... I'm sorry, May 21st through the 27th. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and out-of-hospital medical care providers; and whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills; and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating an Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Talbot County with the theme, EMS Week: Where Emergency Care Begins, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 23rd day of May in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second to go ahead and put this into the record as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, so Brian, you want to bring your team on up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brian Lucates, Director of Talbot County Emergency Services.
Matt Watkins, Division Chief of EMS.
So, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here this evening to celebrate all the hard work and dedication that our folks do all throughout the year. But this is a good opportunity for us to just pause and recognize them for all that work. So, EMS is much larger than just the folks riding around in the ambulance. Not that they don't do a great job, but starts at our 911 dispatchers with them giving pre-arrival instructions all the way through to the hospital with the nurses and physicians. So, it's just our opportunity to really celebrate them this week, so.
That's great.
We appreciate it.
Yep.
Just wanted a couple introductions real quick.
Yeah.
So, we have EMT Trey Pritchard here, paramedic Olivia Santos, Lieutenant Jackie Reese, Captain Ben Defenderfer. Miss, what is that? Sorry. Miss Debbie Thames from the Emergency Department, and Jacisa Dowling from the Emergency Department as well. We brought with us the Emergency Room Staff as well because as stated in the proclamation by Brian, they're such an integral part of emergency services. It's not just about the paramedics, it's about them as well.
It's about the team.
The whole system.
It's a whole system, that's correct.
Yeah, you got it. Ms. Buckey?
Thank you for all you do. So proud of you.
Yep, yep.
I'll echo Ms. Milkie's thanks. I mean, you guys are 24/7/365. I mean, without a doubt, pick up the phone, you're there.
Yeah.
It's very commendable what you do. Cannot thank you guys enough. Appreciate all you do for our county.
Yep, thank you. Yep, and I'll add that with my colleagues, you guys are the best. I feel privileged that you're here, and I'm privileged to actually been in the system myself. So, and I enjoy it, and once you get in the system, it never leaves your blood, that's for sure. When you hear that siren or you hear, you know, things in general, you always want to try to help. So, I really appreciate everything that you do, especially for the last three years, because the world's changed a little bit in the last three years dramatically, and you guys have stepped up for us and really took care of this county, and I really, really appreciate it, that's for sure. And I'm going to allow Mr. Stamp, you know, your old boss.
He's still my boss.
Mr. Council President, it's dangerous that you hand the mic over to me on this subject.
Well, so let me comment. I know you've got some clay stuff, okay?
See, it's going to be here for a while. I know.
No, obviously, I'm incredibly proud of all of them in the system. And, you know, Maryland is unique nationally, probably worldwide. Worldwide, and Talbot County is recognized as the leader in the state of Maryland for having a comprehensive EMS system. It starts with community awareness engagement through the Paramedic Foundation and placement of AEDs throughout the county, and to learn CPR with the CPR Marathon every year. Our communication operators, it doesn't work if it doesn't get through there. Those professionals do such a great job. Our paramedics and EMTs are second to none, and our AED hospital staff do a fantastic job. So, you know, like you, I'm very proud to recognize them and to be a part of the system that we have. So, thank you for that.
Yep, thank you, guys. So, Mr. Stepp's got a proclamation for you. If you guys want to come on up and have a picture.
Smile, big smiles.
All right, one, two, three. There you go.
Thank you. Ben can see by...
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I just put my last two cents in. That's the people that take care of us in this county and save our lives. And there's, it's priceless, that's for sure. So, I'm glad we got to recognize them. that's for sure. So, I'm glad, I'm glad we got to recognize them. Okay, let's move on, on the next thing on the agenda. We're going to start the public hearing on FY24 Community Development Block Grant. So, Ms. Mary Kay?
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
So, the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program is a federally funded program designed to assist counties and municipal governments with activities directed toward neighborhood revitalization, housing opportunities, economic development, and improve public facilities and services. The Maryland CDBG program is administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development. CDBG applications are accepted on a competitive basis, both at the county and the state level. The maximum amount Talbot County can apply for annually is for $800,000. Whether it's for one project or multiple projects, that's our maximum. Upon receipt of notification from DHCD of the FY24 grant application process, Talbot County emailed a large number of our local nonprofits, and we posted the notice of the Community Development Block Grant funding on our county webpage. If any nonprofit is interested in receiving notification of future applications, they can go onto our webpage, look under grant opportunities, and contact me through that link, and I'll be happy to add them to the list for future reference. Tonight, the, we received two letters of interest, and one of those has asked to be withdrawn. So, we are only going to review the St. Vincent de Paul application this evening. The Talbot Interface Shelter has decided to move forward with other funding opportunities and/or maybe come back in a future time. So, we hope they are able to receive funds and/or we partner with them at a later time.
Okay.
So, the St. Vincent de Paul is seeking $465,000 to partially supplement their $620,000 cost of an expansion project located at 29533 Canvas Back Drive. St. Vincent de Paul is requesting these funds to expand their facility to increase the space dedicated to interviewing and counseling those in need of financial assistance, and enlarging the thrift store donation area and their parking lot. In FY16, St. Vincent de Paul received $450,000 in CDBG funds for construction of an addition on the existing building to expand the food pantry area. They are currently requesting expansion of that same facility under this grant opportunity. So, we are seeking council recommendation for project support through this public hearing this evening, and through signing the resolution associated with this project for submission to the Community Development Block Grant application process, which they are due to DHCD by June 7th at 2:00 PM. So, again, applications are submitted to DHCD on a competitive basis, and they score the project independently based on many factors, to include the public purpose, benefit to low-to-moderate income persons, project impact, project management, and readiness to proceed, and the local commitment to leveraging of funds. Before we open this to the public hearing, I would like to thank the applicants, to include Alex Handy and his team that have worked diligently through this process. This is a draft of the application so far. So, this is not just filling out two or three papers and you're done. It's a significant process, and they have been very great to work with in providing the information that we need. And also say thank you to Clay and Jessica and staff, who have always been very supportive in helping us through this process. And thank you to the council for your support this evening.
Yep, okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and, and open that to the public, and if you wish to come on up and speak, please come on up.
Good evening.
Yeah.
My name is Alex Handy. I'm president of the Society of St. Vincent de Paul.
Yes, sir.
This is Mike Klein, one of our big benefactors and supporters of the organization. Last week, I was at a restaurant, and I was paying my, for my meal at the counter, and the girl said to me, "St. Vincent de Paul." And I thought, "Let's see, who is she? Is she one of our volunteers?" I mean, we've got like 300 people involved. She said, I said, "I'm sorry," I, I, she said, "You helped me with my rent last week." And I looked at her name tag, and, and it came back to me. I, we're here, dealing with a lot of people, but her name came back to me, and she was a, a mother with two little children, no significant other in her life. And I said, "Well, how you doing?" She said, "Thank God, you guys. I, I couldn't have made it without you." She's one of the people that comes to St. Vincent de Paul for assistance. And I've been involved in the organization for 20 years. I've been president for 15 years. And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is doing what are called home visits, like going out to the people that need help. With COVID, all of that ended, and it's probably ended forever. So, instead of having people, some people come to us, but most of the work being done in the field, we're now faced with a situation with, where we have a lot of people that come in. And previously, it wasn't really an issue, but now, all of a sudden, we have people stacked up and waiting for help. We have a couple of conference rooms, but it's not nearly enough. And we also have files and computers and all this stuff in one, one area. And I never would have thought it was an issue, but boy, it's become an issue. And when you have people telling you their life story, and another couple sitting over here listening, I mean, it's just, the privacy is just lacking. So, we came to the conclusion, we had to, we had to add to our facility. And of course, the other thing is that our revenue comes from the thrift store, most of it, a lot of it. So, the more space we can give it, the more storage area, the more area that we can accept donations in, that's going to help support a lot of the work that we do. I don't know whether, you know, you're probably aware of what we do. We have a food pantry. We have, again, financial assistance. We, we gave out $202,000 worth of financial assistance, $1,250,000 worth of food last year. So, and, and we have a thrift store. We also have a, a part of our organization that goes out and visits people that have nobody to visit them, the Friendly Neighbor Ministry. So, there's a lot, lot to it. I won't bore you with all the details. A lot of us in, in the grant request. You gave us a lot of money in 2016, and we were ever grateful. And we're looking to ask again, and we're certainly very grateful for this. I, I'm not sure, I mean, I, when I first got involved in this organization, we were in an annex building behind the, the old church on Goldsboro Street. We had virtually a, like you'd have a, a pantry in your house. That was the food pantry. And then, when the church was sold, we moved out to a, a storage locker behind Wishinwell Liquor, and that was where we were. And then, as the needs grew, we, we, we grew. And it's kind of taken on a life of its own. And I, I've never run a big organization in my life. And, and here I am, and believe me, I couldn't do it alone. We have an incredible number of volunteers. And I'd also like to thank Mike Klein for being here tonight, also John Ciarto, Steve Gunther, Tom Sanders, and my wife Stephanie, who are also here supporting us.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Great, appreciate it. Appreciate you guys.
That it?
That's it. Yep. Mike, you want to say anything?
No, sir.
Okay, okay.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else on, on this side like to comment? Okay, all right. Anybody on, on this side over here like to comment? Okay, all right. So, if, if that's the case, we'll, we'll go ahead and, we'll close, close the public hearing on that. And we'll go ahead and, at this time, we'll raise our hand.
We'll go to the administrative resolution.
Yep, okay. We'll go ahead, yep.
Ministry Resolution, whereas the state of Maryland through the Department of Housing and Community Development has solicited applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Maryland Community Development Block Grant CDBG program. And whereas Talbot County is eligible to apply for funds from the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And whereas, the Talbot County Council held the required public hearing related to the formulation of the Community Development Block Grant application on May 23rd, 2023. And whereas, the Talbot County Council understands and acknowledges that they would be responsible for the completion of grant activities and any corrective actions, including the repayment of funds if necessary. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Talbot County Council hereby authorizes the submittal of an application for Community Development Block Grant funds in the amount of $465,000 for the St. Vincent de Paul Construction Project located at 29533 Canvas Back Drive, Easton, Maryland 21601. Estimated total project cost is $620,000. The main objectives of SVDP's programs are to provide food, financial assistance, clothing, furniture, and housewares to those in need. They also operate a thrift store which generates income to support the financial assistance provided. Be it further resolved that the Talbot County manager is authorized and empowered to execute any and all documents required for the submission of the application, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 23rd day of May in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Do we need to put this in, in, in form of a motion? Okay?
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay.
Okay, that's good. Yep, you're good. Yep, you're good. Yep.
It's, it's on, it's just on black screen.
Okay. Okay, Madam Secretary. Okay, we'll go to the next.
Bill Number 1530, a bill to address remaining comments and conditions of approval imposed by the Maryland Critical Area Commission, the Commission, for Bill Number 1525, a bill to amend Chapter 190 of the Talbot County Code, zoning subdivision and land development regarding the expansion of structures utilized for non-conforming uses subject to certain conditions.
All righty. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and take the, go ahead and get us started?
Sure. So, back in September of '22, the council passed Bill Number 1525 for the purpose of amending the zoning code regarding the expansion of structures utilized for non-conforming uses. That was processed by the Maryland Critical Area Commission as a refinement to the county's critical area program. And in February, the Critical Area Commission approved the bill with the condition that there be further amendments to provide that within the RC zoning district, that the cumulative result of multiple expansions of structures used for non-conforming uses comply with subsection B as proposed, and that law, coverage limits for the entire site, and any requests beyond that require grid allocation.
Okay, sounds great.
Counsel, thank you. Bryce Yelton, Assistant Planning Officer here in Talbot County. Again, this is a citizen-sponsored text amendment. So, this came from Mr. Jerry Davis, and his representation, Mr. Zach Smith is behind me. So, for, you know, personal things about this particular site, I'd ask you, if you have any questions, they're in attendance today. This essentially came back from the Critical Area Commission with that additional language, considering that in the RC District, cumulative results of expansion can exceed a certain amount. This language is typical in other parts of the county code, and it's actually consistent with the other, can, other parts of the code that are also consistent with RC District standards, along with the Critical Area standards. So, we've got the property that's been applied for by the applicant, but I'd like to remind everybody that this isn't just for this property. This includes all non-conforming uses within Talbot County. So, this, these are uses that are not currently permitted in the zoning districts in which they are, have been established, but were established before current regulations. So, this could be like Mr. Davis's property, or this could be anybody else in Talbot County that operates a business or non-conforming use in a zoning district where they're no longer permitted. So, if you have any further questions, or if anybody in the audience has any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and open it up. So, anybody on, on, on this side would like to come up and talk about it? Okay. Bill 1530. Okay, anybody on this side like to come on out? Yeah, come on up, Zach. Good evening.
For the record, Zach Smith on behalf of Jerry and Susan Davis. And as Bryce indicated, my clients were the applicants for Bill 1525, which was adopted by the council last fall. We're here to speak in support of Bill 1530. To be clear, my applicants, my, my clients didn't request this additional language. This is being driven completely by the Critical Area Commission. In fact, my client's property isn't even designated RC, so it won't impact them one way or the other. But because the adoption of Bill 1530 is seemingly necessary for Bill 1525 to become fully effective, we would ask the council to please adopt that, Bill 1530.
Great.
Which will allow my applicants to then propose an expansion to their small business through the special exception process. And just to be clear, you know, any expansion of a non-conforming use requires an applicant to go through the Board of Appeals process. It's a very public process. There's a safeguard, certain findings that have to be made. Nothing in Bill 1525 or 1530 changes that. That safeguard is still there. This merely allows them an opportunity to ask for an expansion. Because prior to Bill 1525, the maximum expansion one could ask for is 20%. And while that was appropriate for bigger buildings, for small buildings, that provided for very little opportunity for expansion. And my client could only propose a 500 or 600 square foot expansion to their business. This bill allows them to propose up to a 3,000 square foot, but still leaves that 20% cap in place for anything over that.
Right.
So, please adopt 1530.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else over here to my right like to come up? Anybody? Okay. At this time, did you want to say something?
I'm, I'm good.
You were looking at me funny. I wasn't sure.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. All right. I'll go ahead and, and, and close the public hearing on 1530. And this legislation will be eligible for vote on June 13th. Okay. All right. Now let's go to eligible for vote. Madam Secretary, with 1529 into the record.
Bill Number 1529, an act to establish the 2023-2024 Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance.
Okay. Where's Ms. Sparks at? There she is. Okay. Good evening.
This is going to be a very happy ending to a very successful budget season. So, I thought I would briefly go over the amendments that we recommended to you in our last budget work session.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll hit them briefly and summarize them. I won't go into the detail that I went into in that work session. But there were amendments to three of our funds. The General Fund had an increase in grant revenues, and it had a decrease in transfers from our Development Impact Fund, with a corresponding increase to our General Fund Reserve. The net effect was to, yes. So, and then, in our expenditures, sorry, we had decreases to our share of salary, increases to our circuit court, and increases to our miscellaneous expenses. The net effect of all of these was zero. So, we are remaining at the $128,849,000 So we are remaining at the $128,849,000 number for our general fund revenues and expenses. So with our capital projects, we had an addition, additional project that came up, the White Marsh Elementary School Roof. That project was an increase in revenues for the Capital Projects Fund of $860,000. And there is going to be a corresponding increase in capital expenditures for that of $860,000. The CAD project for emergency services, we were taking, there was $2 million, $2,850,000 in loan proceeds or lease proceeds that we were going to expect. But we were taking that out and we were reducing the amount of our capital project requests for that capital project to cover only that amount that we would need for FY '24. And that was $550,000. And that was going to come from a transfer from our Development Impact Fund. There's also, there was also the request to add to the St. Michael's Library Expansion. That increase is a combination of grant revenues of $159,800 and $114,000 that is coming as a transfer from the Development Impact Fund. And there are corresponding expenditures. The overall net effect of those changes on the Capital Projects Fund was a decrease of $400,600. And the revenues and expenditures of the Capital Projects Fund will total $9,114,600 with those amendments. I'm so sorry, I've got my pages mixed up here. Okay. With the Development Impact Fund, which was the third fund that was affected by these amendments, we had a decrease of transfers to the general fund of $550,000 and we replaced that as a transfer to the Capital Projects Fund of $550,000. And we also had additional use of reserves of the Development Impact Fund of $160,000. That was an increase. That was going to be to fund the White Marsh Elementary School Roof. And also reserves from the Development Impact Fund of an increase of $114,800 for the White, for the, excuse me, St. Michael's Library Expansion. And there are the corresponding expenditures that are affected by that, which are transfers out to those funds. The net effect of these amendments on the Development Impact Fund is $274,800 increase. The revenues and expenditures for the Development Impact Fund will now total $899,800 with these amendments.
Okay. Good job on that. Let's see. All right. Cal, any discussion? All amendments? Any discussion?
No discussion, but just a one more time of public thank you to all you and Caitlin have done, Martha, Clay, Jessica, team, everyone, all of our department heads. This has been almost a three-month process. And first time going through it, it's been really, really heartwarming to see how it does and how things are spent, as well as how revenues are received. So I just want to make sure I, you know, public thank you again.
Okay. Okay. All right. So with these amendments, by show of hands, I wish to introduce the amendments. Okay. All of us. Okay? Okay? So Yep, now we can go ahead. Is there a motion to approve the amendments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second. Okay. Madam Secretary, I've got a motion second to go ahead and approve the amendments. Can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Lusher?
Yep. Let's get ready to say that. Yep.
Council Vice President Lusher votes aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Councilmember Hayth votes aye.
Okay. Okay. All the amendments pass? Okay. All right. Now we can go ahead. Is there, we're going to keep moving forward.
The bill as amended.
Yep. The bill as amended. Is there a motion? The bill as amended? So moved? Okay.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Council Vice President Lusher votes aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Councilmember Hayth votes aye.
Okay. Okay. All right. We got a budget. We got a budget. Good job.
Thank you so much. And I'd like to
Thank you.
Yep.
To also say that the department heads, the fellow department heads, the county manager's office, this has been quite a baptism by fire. This budget has for my new Assistant Finance Director and myself. And our coworkers, our peers make it so much easier to work with. We just have a wonderful team here in Talbot County and I just can't say enough about all of them as well.
Yep.
You and your team have done a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
One more thing now.
Well, you know, I would echo what everyone said. Everybody came to the table. Our department has, not only the department has, but agencies and organizations that are funded by the county stepped up and worked with us to put this together. Counsel, you were wonderful to work with. We got in the weeds and I would just simply say that we can reassure the public that we're carrying on the conservative approach to budgeting. This is not a frivolous county. It's the county that does more with less. And we continue to do that today in passing this budget. It also recognizes that we're in interesting times and it's important to maintain a fund balance for uncertainties. So I think you checked all the boxes in carrying out the successful budgeting of the past. So thank you. It's my honor to be part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is Mr. Stamp, you're up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Counsel President, members of the council. Under County Manager Report for Board and Committee Vacancies, we have two this evening. One is for the Animal Control Board. We're requesting the appointment of Ms. Donna Haddaway to serve on that board.
Okay. Do I have a motion? So moved?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second to put Mrs. Haddaway on the board of, what did you say?
Animal Control.
Animal Control.
Yes, sir.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
The next item is for the Board of Electrical Examiners. We're requesting the appointment of Donald Ewing Senior to serve on the Board of Electrical Examiners.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second to put Mr. Ewing on the Electrical Examiners Board. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
I'll invite your Director of Corrections, Terry Kukolos, to come forward with Captain Green.
Sure.
Cindy Green.
Yep.
One of his key staff members. We have two items that he wants to present for your consideration this evening. I'll just give the opening and then hand it off to him and I'll fill in where necessary.
Okay.
You have a request from the Department of Corrections to extend the current agreement with WellPath, formerly Correct Care Solutions LLC, to provide inmate medical and mental health services. We'll give the microphone to Terry and Cindy.
Terry Kukolos, Director of Corrections. Great to be here with the county council. I agree with you that the work done by County Manager's Office, the Department of Budget, and both Martha and Caitlin have been outstanding. And for our two requests tonight that are part of the budget, I'll turn it over to Captain Green to elaborate further.
Welcome, Captain Green. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here and I appreciate all the work that the council has done and the support that you give to the Central Center. We are formally requesting the increase in our the, well, due to WellPath contract first that has already been approved in our budget. So we're just asking for an increase due to the increase of cost for the services, for the healthcare for the inmates.
Sure.
And Counsel, just to fill in there, this is a one-year extension of a contract with WellPath for inmate medical and mental health services. And FY '24 management fee adjustment along with CPI increase resulting in cost for services budgeted at $798,000. Sufficient funds are available in the budget.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion? So moved? Okay. We got a motion second to go ahead and approve and with our contract. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. So you worried about this all day long, didn't you?
I did.
We have one more.
You did a good job. You did a great job.
He has one more.
Okay.
So we have a request from the Department of Corrections to extend the current agreement with Trinity Services Group to provide inmate meals. And I'll hand it over to Captain Green.
We are, this increase in budget has already been approved in our budget. And this is due to the cost of food prices going up. So we want to keep our inmates happy.
There we go.
And making sure that we get the increase so we can provide adequate meals.
Okay. That's great. Okay.
And just filling in, just so for the record, Counsel, the numbers. They're requesting Council approval for FY '24 contract adjustment at Trinity Food Services Group. For inmate meals reflecting an 8.2% CPI at cost of $335,306, there are sufficient funds available in the budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Do I have a motion? So moved?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second to go ahead and prove food cost. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
There you go. Now you can eat.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Well done.
Yep.
Next, I will invite Ray Clark to come forward, your county engineer. As it comes up, Department of Public Works is asking for your permission to apply for and accept a grant, grant funding from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Watershed Improvement Program to assist with the acquisition of a dredged material placement site. And I'll hand it over to Ray for the specifics.
Again, Ray Clark, county engineer. Basically, and I guess through a telephone conversation with Isaac Wilding with the Department of Natural Resources, he advised me that they are going to be having a grant opportunity for the county to apply for $100,000 through the Watershed Improvement Program. And they are encouraging us to apply. So the key here would be to apply primarily, we're in the gauge right now with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on doing a Section 107 study for the NAPS Narrows, which is looking at dredging. And then the key here would be, we would need to determine or find a dredge material placement site. And that's what we'll be focusing on.
Okay. That's great. All right. Do we have a motion? So moved?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second to go ahead and give Mr. Clark the approval to move forward. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Ray.
Yep.
Is Ms. Margaret in the audience? Hello, Margaret. Thank you.
Hey there. How are you?
Counsel, as she comes up, we have a request from the town of Oxford and Talbot Thrive for a letter of support for a grant application to the 2023 Chem Lampier Bike Ways Program for design of a bike trail from Causeway Park in Oxford to Oxford Conservation Park. And I'll just hand it over to her to explain the details. Margaret, thank you.
Great. Hopefully you all have the backgrounder in your packet. The request is for actually a feasibility and design study for this grant application. And the main purpose of the request is that we want to take this trail design across county parklands to reach the Oxford Conservation Park. So the letter of support would be really welcome to, so we can include the county property in that feasibility study. And one clarification, it's for a shared use path. When we write the grant, we have to emphasize the bike aspect of it, but it's really for casual leisure cyclists and families and for people walking.
Okay. Is there a motion? So moved?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second to help Oxford with a support letter, support letter for a bike path. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I, as liaison to our Parks Board, I was there for both Mr. Marks and Mr. McTavish's presentation.
I recognize you now.
So, you know, just the fact that we had the conversation this past week about the Oxford Kids Camp being able to use that same bike path down East Pier and then down to the Conservation Period. So as a parent, so both my wife and I, you know, we, when we found out the kids were going to be riding all their bikes along Oxford Road there, you know, hearing that they now have a path that's away from that traffic is a, is a huge win. So, you know, I encourage you guys to move forward with that.
Talbot Thrive is really excited to be sort of building this terminus in Oxford and this place in a safe way for kids and families to move around without being on the main road. And I will say, I forgot to mention that the town of Oxford Commissioners are meeting tonight as well and they voted to approve moving forward with the application as well. So it looks like we're a go. So very excited. Thank you guys so much.
Good. Okay. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Cool.
And Counsel, that completes your county manager report for this week. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Good job. Okay. Next, let's do a public comment. Okay. Do we have? You forgot to check. You know? Okay. All right. So does anybody like to come on up for public comment? Come on up. Thanks, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Counsel. And thank you very much for permitting me to speak. My name's Dan Watson. I'm the founder and head of the Talbot Integrity Project. Live in 8404 Avaley Manor Lane. Thirty days, within the last 30 days, the Maryland Department of Environment has sent to the county two letters requesting, directing that the county prepare and modify or a revised sewer service map for the, in the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. And those letters are significant. In particular, the second letter of May 9th, for the first time, really focused on what's known as Figure 23 in the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, which is the sewer service map for the area of Trap. It was about 18 months ago in this room that the council permitted me to present for a lengthy period, all of the details having to do with problems and confusion and misunderstandings having to do in particular with the maps in the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, especially regarding the misunderstanding of the role of a supplemental map called Map Figure 24, which was a planning map, as contrasted with the actual sewer service map, which was Map 23. What I've presented to you and with, is a proposed resolution, a draft resolution dealing with this remapping requested by the MDE, where they pointed out that there have been many parcels that have been incorrectly classified and requesting a new map to be prepared, a single map, to eliminate confusion. The package speaks for itself and the materials that I supplied there, some exhibits, and it's self-explanatory. I'm not here to go through all of that at all. What I am, I'm here on behalf of myself, on behalf of the Talbot Integrity Project. As you know, we're not a membership organization. The Talbot Integrity Project has many supporters throughout the county The Talbot Integrity Project has many supporters throughout the county who are committed to TIP's goals. And on behalf of all of these people, we're requesting that the county consider and adopt the resolution that I've presented to you. It obviously will need some evaluation and consideration. And in that respect, it might be suitable for the Council to consider a work session among the Council, maybe the Planning Commission, maybe others. Certainly, some of the civic organizations in the community, not just TIP, but others, I believe would be very interested in participating in that. The corrections that will come from a review of the materials here will put a spotlight on the misunderstandings that gave rise to an improper classification for the Lakeside Project. And that's a, and those improprieties can now with, in responding to the MDE's directives to fix the maps, we believe that that matter can be properly dealt with to the satisfaction of the community at large. And with due respect, thanks for hearing me out. And I hope you will give a serious evaluation and consideration to this proposed Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan Amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody on my, on my right here? Okay. All right. Let's kind of move on to Council comments. Ms. Milky?
Yes. On June 10th, Hognet Golf Course will be sponsoring the Nettie Jones Memorial Tournament, Golf Tournament. The tournament is dedicated to raising funds for two scholarships to be awarded to Talbot County seniors. The Bill, the William Cochran Memorial Scholarship and the Mark Herman Scholarship. And it's named after two of the biggest supporters of youth golf in Talbot County. Just wanted to say that anyone who's interested in sponsoring or making a donation should contact Rich Seder at Hognet Golf Course. And it's good for the community. And I think they recently announced two recipients of the scholarship. And it's just a great program for our kids.
Well, thank you. Anything else?
No.
We're good. Okay. Mr. Step?
That just, just, again, Council's been busy with, individually, with just different items throughout the community as usual. Had a wonderful tour of Critchlackens Center out to, out to, by the old Mount Pleasant, as well as Easton Elementary School. That was very, very nice to see. And I also just encourage folks to take a, stop out to the Community Center just to see all the improvements that are going on out there. The pickleball courts are well, well underway. You see, the gymnasium is well underway as well. So, if anyone gets a chance, swing on out to, to the Community Center and take a look at all the wonderful things we're doing, so.
Okay, yeah, good job. Okay. And all I have is, I have, I'd like for Mr. Thomas, if he would, I've talked to Council, and I think we would like to see if you could draft up an administrative resolution for us. And we would like to tell the public, we would like to bump the meetings up to 5:00 for the summer and see how that works for everybody. So, it gives everybody, well, I like, he's like that. He's saying yes. So, I think, I think it gives everybody a little bit of time to enjoy the evening. We can get in, kind of get out. And we still are very sensitive on the public being here and having the proper time to meet with us and, and give their comments and stuff. So, we'd like to go ahead and get you draft something up around 5:00, if we can, for the, for the regular meetings. And hopefully, we can get that straight and get that in the, in the records and start that next month if we can.
Yes, while they're ready for June 13th.
Okay, that'd be great. Other than that, Ms. Milky, you want to go ahead and wrap it up for us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 13th, beginning at 6:00 PM. Time hasn't changed yet. The Council will be convening an open session at 4:30 and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personal matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, June 6th, the County Council will be meeting with elected officials from their municipalities at 5:00 PM in the Talbot County Free Library, Easton Branch. The meeting is open to the public. Therefore, if there is a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted.
So moved. Okay. And is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, okay. We got a motion and second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Good job, Ms. Milky. Okay, okay. Thanks for coming, guys. Appreciate it.